Dilegence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as one.
Sunshine Announcement, please.
Yes, good evening Chairman. Today is October 22 in the year 2024. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on October 17 of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public. And we have marked into evidence the sunshine notice as B1.
Thank you Cameron. Can we do a roll call, please?
Yes, Acting Chair. So Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
And Commissioner Green.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. We have five Commissioners present.
Thank you again Cameron. Swing in the staff.
I see Cameron, Eric, Jenru, Matt, Matt, Michael.
There you go.
You guys writing testimony? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Cameron, any correspondence today?
Yes Chair, we have three items that are being adjusted on the agenda. So firstly, under adjournments, item E, it requested to adjourn, however, they requested a date which they will no longer be adjourning to. They are going to carry to a date uncertain and they will re-notice. So that is item E case P 2023-0043, address is 373 Fourth Street. They will be re-noticing, most likely in the new year. All right, and then now, under new business, we have two items carrying. Item 15 case P 2024-0042, conditional use for 415 Monastreet. They're carrying to a date uncertain. They are re-noticing. And then the very last item on the agenda, that is item 23 case P 2023-0024. It's a minor site plan with C variances, address is 285 Forest Street. They've requested to carry to the December 10th meeting of this year with preservation of notice. And that concludes correspondence.
Thank you Cam. Okay, without further ado, I'll call the first case up, and that would be case number P 2024-0181. This is a site plan extension, address at 310 Fourth Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eugene, I'll call out for the applicant. So this is a minor site plan for 310 Fourth Street. It's a four-unit property that was approved at September 22, 2020 meeting. Due to COVID pandemics, supply chain issues, and labor shortages, the applicant was granted a two-year extension on November 15th under case P 22-156. Applicant is requesting a one-year additional extension for the following reason. The applicant is renovating a property at 282 Third Street in Jersey City that his family is going to move into. My applicant has, his elder parents live with him, so they can't start the renovation on 310 Fourth Street till they get out and move to the other property. And they need that extra year to get out and so that they can pull permits and work on this property. And that's the reason for the extension.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call public. Anyone here from the public who wants, wishes to speak on this application?
Chair, see no one for public. I wish to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay. Public is now closed. And who is it? Beasley.
Eric. Not much to add. Staff just request that the applicant agrees to comply with the conditions of approval from the original approval. They do. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2024-0181 as presented to the board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Acting, Acting Vice Chair Council, or Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you sir. Okay, next case is under new business, and this is the review and discussion of a certified artist, Larissa Belchik. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, so this artist was certified by the Artist Certification Board for meeting criteria is 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 as a sculptor and an events artist. And planning staff agrees, and planning staff recommends that the board votes favorably to allow them to enter into the certified artist lottery.
Thank you Cameron. Anyone from the public?
Chair, see no one from the public. I wish to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Yep, and planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the certified artist Larissa Belchik as presented and recommended by the planning department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
On a motion to approve, Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Doctor, Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you Cameron. Next case moving right along is case P 2024-0167. This is a review and discussion of updates to chapter 105 of the city code entitled Building Demolition. Documents available for review. Formal action may be taken.
Alright, good evening Commissioners. I'm here to discuss the update, the proposed updates to the demolition ordinance. If you can recall, this ordinance has not been amended since it was adopted in 2018. The changes we're proposing today reflect revisions required following an appellate court ruling of July, in July of 2023. The changes reflected in this ordinance, we've been actually functioning under since October of last year. So all of the changes in here have actually been in effect. So therefore, they've been vetted. They're not an additional hardship to any demolition application, applicants. The standards of review are the same, just the procedure has changed. And that, those procedural changes again were mandated by that appellate court ruling in July of 2023. The biggest change that affects this board is that the entire section for determinations of significance was invalidated by the courts. So all of the demolition reviews that this board, I'm sorry, demolition memos that this board sees are demolition permit memos, not an unbiased, I'm sorry, an informal opinion prior to the application. If the board would like, I can review some of the specific language changes. But again, like the, the biggest change really is in 105-3. And that is now that instead of HPC staff reviewing all of these demolition applications and making determinations based on our professional opinion for approvals and denials, if we are recommending that the application be denied, it goes to the HPC board. They review the application and they make a recommendation to the zoning officer based off of our memo. Applicants are able to come to the meetings and testify to their application, bring their own professional witnesses if they would like. We have had some applicants do that. And just for context, so far this year, we have had 167 demolition applications, and we have recommended denial on 12. So this is a very, very, very small number of applicants that this change affects. Do any Commissioners have any questions regarding these proposed changes?
No.
No?
Any questions?
Okay. Alright, in that case, planning staff does recommend, recommendation of these amendments to the city council.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for public. Anyone from the public here to speak on this? No one from the public?
Chair, see no one from the public. I wish to close the public portion.
Okay, public is, oh, I need a second. Thank you. Public is closed. And you recommend, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2024-0167, which is a review and discussion of updates to chapter 105 of the city code entitled Building Demolition, which was recommended by planning, and it's gonna be forward to city council.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Roll call?
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you guys. Okay, next, next case is case P 2024-0168. This is a review and discussion of updates to 345-30F and 345-30G of the city's land development ordinance entitled Local Landmark Designation Standards. Documents are available for review. Formal action may be taken.
Good evening. I am here, I'm Michael. Nice to meet everybody. And I'm here, the updates to this portion of the ordinance are something that was part of our historic preservation element of the master plan. It was one of the main recommendations to obtain certified local government status, CLG status, and to codify criteria for local designation. So currently, we're actively in the process of obtaining that CLG status. And one of the things that is required is updating this language. Currently, we have a really bare bones section in FNG that just says essentially, it can be done, but has no guidance on how to actually do that. So we have looked around and kind of synthesized a ordinance that, you know, draws from other municipalities within the state. We had it reviewed by the New Jersey SHPO, and it kind of mirrors what is required at the state and national level for nomination. And if anyone would like me to go through some of the specifics of the language, I can. Just mainly, you know, having ways to nominate individual districts as well as multiple property designations, and then just outlining the process that they'll go through, going to HBC, and then this board, and then before city council.
Any questions, anyone?
No.
Okay, planning staff recommends a motion to approve, and forward on to city council.
Thank you Michael. Anyone here from the public? No one from the public?
See no one from the public. Wish to close the public portion.
Second.
Public is now closed, and you recommend your approval.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2024-0168, review and discussion of updates to the 345-30F, 345-30G of the city's land development ordinance entitled Local Landmark Designation Standards, recommended by planning staff, and forward to city council for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
All right, on a motion to approve, Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Next case I'm calling up is case P 2024-0118. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances, address is 20 South Cove Avenue.
Good afternoon, Gregory Assadorian from the Dakota's Law Firm on behalf of the applicant, Liberty Harbor North Partners LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening Chairman, good evening Council. Gerard Pazillo from Genova Burns. My colleague Eugene Paulino submitted a letter this afternoon with regards to this application. He did want to have the opportunity to address the board prior to getting into testimony proper, because there are some arguments with regards to potential defects, prohibiting the ability of the board to go forward this evening. Mr. Paulino is en route. There was a demonstration along Grand Street that I think has clogged some things up with traffic wise. So I would just ask for a few minutes to allow him to come here. I could step out and call him again to see where he's at, but I did call him when you were going through the site plan extension application, and he was on Grand Street. So he is a few minutes away. I'm just asking for that request.
Just, just for the record, I did not receive a letter from their office, so I don't even know what letter he's referring to.
There was a letter submitted to, I believe, the Director of Planning, the Review Planner. I, I wasn't able to upload it to the portal, or we weren't able to upload it to the portal since we're not contacts on the application. I don't know, you know, how it was disseminated to all the parties. I just knew there was an email sent out with the letter. I don't know who was on it.
So Council, I suspect that you did not send that email.
I did not send the email.
You're aware of the letter.
Yes.
But didn't send it.
Correct.
Didn't sign it.
No, I did not.
And obviously, your other part is not here yet, is en route, so.
Something like that, yes, but he's en route.
So.
My colleague.
Chairman, obviously, we, we always extend counsel as much courtesy as we can. I don't want to put counsel on the spot and attempt to have him move forward when he's not the designated attorney on the matter. Mr. Paulino is expected. So it's up to the board, but I don't think it's fair to counsel to have him attempt to put forth Mr. Paulino's positions on something that Mr. Paulino is expected on. That being said, I'm curious about this letter. If it came to me today, I can guarantee you I didn't read it, and I wouldn't read it because the meeting's tonight, and probably shouldn't have been sent today, but we'll get into it when counsel arrives.
True.
Chairman, it's up to you. And if that letter wasn't shared with counsel, I accept his representation. I don't know if you happen to have a copy of it that.
I don't have, I, I, I'm here on.
Understood, understood counsel.
I might file on that. I could go back in my computer, attempt to see what.
Sure, Mr. Paulino has it in his.
I'm sure he does.
Case.
Expecting he does.
So.
Yep, Commissioners, are you okay with holding off and bringing him back up again?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we'll do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Assadorian, is that okay with you?
It is. I defer to the board. I just want to note for the record that it's now 6:07, and the meeting started at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Council. Okay, we'll move on. We'll put that on hold, and we'll now call up case P 2024-0177. This is for review and discussion of amendments to the Morris Canal redevelopment plan regarding mixed-use zones C and E, authorized by Resolution 22-904. Formal action may be taken.
Hey, good evening. Charles Harrington of Connell Foley on behalf of the applicants who are presenting this amendment. Similar to the last application, Mr. Height is caught in traffic. So I apologize, but I'd ask that, you know, we'd be bumped, and you, you moved on. I spoke with Mr. McCann. He's, he's ready with Ms. Worstell if that application is, is next.
I believe it is. Okay, having been stuck in that same traffic, I understand, sort of. So, okay, I will go ahead and call you back later on.
Okay.
Let me call back now case, next one, P 2024-0175. This is for review and discussion of amendments to the West Side Avenue redevelopment plan regarding allowed uses in the Loft Residential District, petitioned by West Side Holdings LP, authorized by Council Resolution 24-0780. Counsel.
Good evening Commissioners, staff, Council. Jim McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley appearing on behalf of the petitioner, West Side Holdings LLP. My colleague, Mr. Harrington was mostly correct. I have an architect who was going to make an appearance who is also stuck in traffic. However, I think I can do this without the architect, because it's really an amendment to a redevelopment plan that's adding some permitted uses. So I'm willing to go forward. If the board wants to see some visuals from an architect, we might have to stop and, and finish it later, or I can.
Or, or there's someone coming in right now.
Okay, all right. So I'm, I'm just gonna go. All right, thank you. Want to set your easel up? Okay. All right, so my client, West Side Holdings, is owner of this property. This property received a site plan approval in 2023 for a six-story, 200-unit building with 20 affordable housing units, and 100 parking spaces. At the time that the project was approved, the, one of the requirements of the redevelopment plan was there's an old industrial building that had to be adaptively reused. So the project as approved is adaptably reusing that building. It's located on the corner of Fisk and West Side Ave, but it mostly fronts on West Side Avenue. It is in the West Side Avenue redevelopment plan. And at the time of the approval, retail, office, and restaurant was not included in any of the permitted uses for that district. So the ground floor of the building to be renovated and adaptively reused is all, it's over 5,000 square feet, and it's all just amenity space. And when my client, my client purchased the property and then engaged me to do financing, to obtain financing with, help him obtain financing for the project, it crossed my mind that the space is really appropriate for retail office or restaurant. It's right on West Side Avenue. So I spoke to some folks in planning, and I believe everybody generally agrees that adding retail, office, and restaurant as a permitted use would be a good thing, not only for the project, but also for the community. So I filed an application to amend the redevelopment plan to include those uses and to include a parking requirement for those uses under some circumstances. And I filed the application. Charles Height and Carolyn have done a master plan consistency report and found the amendment to be consistent with the master plan, I mean, with the redevelopment plan and the master plan. So that's the purpose of us being here tonight. My, my architect, Anwar Alkhatib, can testify and just show you quickly where the, where the space that I'm discussing is located. Anwar, come on up.
Yes, I do. My name is Anwar Alkhatib, A-N-W-A-R. Last name is Alkhatib, A-L-K-H-A-T-I-B. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey from AK Architecture, 151 West Pass Sixth Street, Rochelle Park, New Jersey.
Anwar, is your license current?
Yes, it is.
And have you testified before this board before?
Yes, I did.
Numerous times, right?
Yes.
All right. Just very quickly, could you show the board?
Mr. Alkhatib is qualified.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Alkhatib, you've prepared some plans for tonight's proposal?
That's correct. And I want to share these copies with the board members so they can have it, if they want to.
I think if, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just easier for them to look at it, so.
Those are miniature versions of what's on the easel?
Yes, it is, yes.
Counsel, that was submitted with the amendment?
Actually, and Anwar, that plan that you're gonna show the board was submitted, we have filed an application to amend the site plan for this project also, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that plan is part of the application to amend the site plan, is that correct?
That's part of the first, the application, correct.
Okay, so that's on the planning portal also?
Correct, yes. There's a difference, just the name of the space that we're discussing today.
All right, just quickly show the board where the space is. Sure.
So that I'm clear. This is a petition to amend the redevelopment plan.
Yes.
But simultaneously with that, you also filed a site plan amendment?
For other reasons. The site plan amendment.
That's not this.
That's not this. If the city council were to eventually adopt the amendments to the redevelopment plan, the applicant would have to come back to this board again to obtain another amendment to the redevelop, to the site plan to allow for the retail or restaurant or office to be incorporated into the project, yes.
And obviously, those were filed separately?
Correct.
So let's mark this in conjunction with the redevelopment plan amendment.
Agreed.
Okay. So we're gonna mark this as A1 for purposes of the record. And I'm showing it architectural ground floor plan, last revised, it looks like October 22, '24.
Correct, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, so can I go to the plan right now briefly?
Please, please.
So what you're seeing in your hands is the ground floor of the proposed addition to the existing industrial building on the corner of West Side Avenue and Fisk Street. So the shaded area here represents the ground floor of the existing plan, of the existing building right now. As our attorney mentioned, this, this part of the plan is submitted as a site plan approval amendment for the original approved application of building 200 units in the site. We did some changes on the addition, which is the, everything around the gray building or the yellow building on your, on your pages. That's the addition to the, to the existing building. In the application, we have the site plan amendment. We are calling this, as was approved before, an amenity space. But right now, we just changed the name on this page to be a commercial and retail space. We're seeking the approval for this to be adopted as a commercial retail.
But Counsel, we're getting one step ahead of ourselves. Just to illustrate to the board that this is the area that the proposed redevelopment plan amendment would apply to.
That's correct, yes.
So then let's move to planning testimony with respect to the amendment to the redevelopment plan to allow that in the future.
Right, so my next witness would be the Carolyn, the planner.
Correct.
The master plan consistency report.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Alkhatib.
Thank you.
Next witness, Carolyn Worstel.
Good evening. I do. It's Carolyn Worstel, C-A-R-O-L-Y-N, Worstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
And Ms. Worstel, we have qualified you in the past. Your license is current?
It is.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So as you, as mentioned, we're here for an amendment to the West Side Avenue redevelopment plan. And to give just a little bit of, the background is, the site that is located here is in a zone or in a sub-district called the Loft Residential District. And it covers just this site. It is not found anywhere else in the redevelopment plan. So what we're proposing here tonight would be subject only to this specific project. But that Loft Residential District doesn't allow for any ground floor commercial uses, which is permitted elsewhere within this redevelopment plan along West Side Avenue. So essentially, what we're trying to do is allow for those same ground floor commercial uses and, you know, retail, restaurants, office uses to continue along the corridor and sort of complete that corridor to include this site. So that's essentially what we're seeking to do here tonight. There is, you know, it's a very minimal amendment. As I mentioned, it's just for this site, and it focuses just on adding those uses and then essentially allowing for some parking requirements to be applicable to those uses. I think overall, when we looked at this, we were looking to say, you know, this corridor is such an important commercial district for the city. And so what we were really seeking to do here was to, as I said, continue that corridor. And I think overall, when we were looking at consistency, we looked at the West Side Avenue plan as well as the master plan, and we found that this was very consistent with the overall goals of the West Side Avenue redevelopment plan, particularly Objective A, to redevelop West Side Avenue redevelopment area that is consistent with the principles of a traditional neighborhood development. And when we think about that, we think it, it's often characterized as that 15-minute city, and in order to have a 15-minute 15-minute city, and in order to have a 15-minute city, you need to have commercial spaces in proximity to, uh, transportation and, and proximity to, uh, residential uses. So, by allowing those sorts of uses here, we're, you know, continuing that, uh, reinforcing that, uh, character of Westside Avenue, um, in proximity to both the residents in this building, but also to the proximity to NJCU campus and students, as well as the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Uh, we're consistent with Objective B, to recognize significant opportunities for residential and commercial redevelopment that are afforded by the area's proximity to the Westside Avenue Light Rail Station. So again, this, uh, sub-district is really within that 15-minute walking distance, that transit-oriented development area within that Westside Avenue, um, uh, Light Rail stop. So again, it, this is continuing to reinforce that, um, character for that commercial redevelopment in that, uh, area. Objective D, to reinforce Westside Avenue as a neighborhood commercial corridor by providing redevelopment opportunities for the construction of commercial and mixed-use development and ancillary features. Again, I think pretty self-explanatory, we're continuing to allow commercial, um, at this site and continuing that corridor. And then finally, Objective F, to provide for the orderly phased conversion of vacant land, underutilized commercial facilities and antiquated industrial land uses and buildings within the redevelopment area to a modern, integrated, mixed-use community. So what's very specific about this site, um, and this district is the fact that there is this existing industrial structure that is being adaptively reused, it's a corner site, it's really, a, a really good site for commercial use, and I think it will provide a much better, um, use to the wider community than limiting it to just a residential use, which would basically mean that it can't be used for, um, the wider public, it would be limited to the residents of that building. So I think that this is, uh, really, uh, allows for a, a better use of that existing, um, structure. And then looking at, uh, the master plan consistency, um, it, obviously, this is, uh, consistent with numerous, um, master plan, um, objectives, um, looking at the economic opportu, you know, economic objectives, um, Goal One, to promote development of a diversified economy, so again, allowing for more, um, commercial uses in that commercial corridor. Looking at, uh, Goal Two, establishing that 15-minute city, um, which again, we, we talked about before, this would allow that 15-minute city, that corridor to, to continue. Social equity, accommodating population growth and changing needs, um, so again, the needs of the people who are moving into this area, they need more commercial and, and retail spaces, and this would allow for that to, uh, be accommodated. Um, it's consistent with the land use element, uh, land use principles, to continue efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods. So again, by allowing for the commercial uses, we're, we're enhancing the residential neighborhood by allowing them to have those goods and services in proximity to them. Uh, and strengthening neighborhood-oriented commercial areas. So again, Westside Avenue is a major commercial corridor, uh, not just for the city, but also, again, for that neighborhood that surrounds it, so, again, this would strengthen that corridor. So I think, uh, overall can be concluded that this redevelopment plan amendment is substantially consistent with the goals and objectives of not only the Westside Avenue redevelopment plan, but also the Jersey City Master Plan. So, uh, it concludes my testimony.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
What part of this area belongs to your client? Everything or parking lot and everything?
The whole thing.
Whole thing? And how about the stackers you have, 24-by-2 parking? How it's going to work?
So that, that will all be part of the, the site plan, um, application when that comes forward, um, but the, those spaces, you know, are, are part of that application.
And we're not asking you to approve that tonight, we're just asking for the redevelopment plan amendment.
Which is to allow the commercial use only, it, it really has nothing to do with, with how the parking would be laid out internally.
Good, okay. Anyone else?
Okay, that concludes my case. Respectfully request a favorable recommendation to the city council for the proposed amendment.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, anyone here from the public?
Chair, see no one from the public, I wish to close the public portion.
Second it.
The public is now closed. Who do we have? Matt?
Staff concurs with Ms. Worstel's testimony as accurate. As has been mentioned, the master plan explicitly identifies this area as being in, um, what our plan calls a transit core. You're a 10, 15-minute walk from the Westside Avenue Light Rail Station. Generally, north of the station, there's a commercial char, commercial character to Westside Avenue, but south of the station where this property is located, it gets, um, patchier and less consistent, and this plan in other locations, as well as other zoning over there, um, already pushes the area towards taking on this mixed-use commercial corridor, commercial corridor character. Staff recommends, um, a favorable recommendation, city council is consistent with the master plan and the Westside Avenue redevelopment plan.
Thank you, Matt.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0175, which is a review and discussion of the amendments to the Westside Avenue redevelopment plan regarding allowed use in the Loft Residential District, which was petitioned by the Westside Holding, Holdings LP.
I second it.
With the recommendation of planning staff and forward to city council for approval.
Okay.
I second it.
It's been, motion made and seconded twice, we like that, okay? We'll call.
Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Councilwoman Prince Ari. And Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you, guys. Yes, uh, is Mr. Pellino here? Okay, perfect, hi, sir. Okay, I'll call, I'll recall back, uh, case P2024-0118. Uh, this is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances, address 20 South Cove Ave., and the applicant is Liberty Harbor North Partners.
Go ahead, counsel, let's get appearances on the record now that Mr. Pellino has arrived.
Sure. Gregory Assadorian from the Dakota's Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant, Liberty Harbor North Partners LLC.
Like work?
Yes, we should.
Gene Pellino, Genova Burns, on behalf of LHN Owner Urban Renewal and LHN Roman numeral two, LLC.
Good evening.
Thank you, good evening.
And I appreciate your pausing.
So, Mr. Pellino, where we- It was indicated that a letter was sent sometime today, uh, however, Mr. Assadorian has not been provided a copy of that letter.
It was in the portal, it was sent to a U, to Tanya Marion, to, uh, Cameron Black.
So it's not in the portal?
Well, it was supposed to be in the portal, I think it was arranged to be in the portal.
So, Mr. Pellino, it doesn't work that way as far as whether or not it gets uploaded to the portal, but, uh, it is not in the portal.
Well, I think it was a difficulty with loading it onto the portal initially, because we're not a party.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we had, we had to work through planning. However, it was sent via email directly to the three people mentioned, so I assume everybody got it, yeah.
So, Mr. Pellino, I received it this afternoon. I did not read it because it came in this afternoon, but yes, I received an email from your organization, I don't believe it was you specifically, but-
It was me.
It came from your firm.
Yeah, sure.
But Mr. Assadorian says that he was not provided with a copy of the letter.
I don't think I have an obligation to provide it to Mr. Assadorian if I believed it to be in the portal, and I believe it to be in the portal.
Okay, so, it is not in the portal, I have not reviewed it, Mr. Assadorian has not been provided a copy, I don't know if you have a copy.
I do.
But, uh, I'm just laying that out there, so, nobody on this board has seen that correspondent, just so you're aware of that.
That's too bad.
That being said, we have your appearance for the record. Do you have anything else that you would like to say at this very moment?
Other than the letter that you haven't been able to read, uh, uh, sure, I, I'll repeat some of the argument I can, if I can, it depends upon how you want to lay this out. I'm happy to do it, I think I would suggest, if I can, that, uh, there's a threshold issue which should be resolved. And if it, if it is resolved, uh, not in my favor, so that the applicant can proceed, then the applicant can proceed, and I have the ability to cross-examine any of his witnesses, I assume.
Okay.
I think that's a way to go.
Well, we'll decide that. So, obviously, that is how the board will-
I appreciate that.
-decide, uh, as far as proceeding, threshold, are we talking about a jurisdictional issue?
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about, we're talking about jurisdictional issues and factual issues and defects in the, in the application. So, if the application is deemed to be, found to be inadequate, for whatever reason, then the hearing would be, I guess, postponed until that defect is cured, because you, you would have effectively an incomplete application, right?
So the application has been deemed complete, which is obviously why it's scheduled and has been scheduled, right? It was deemed complete by staff and has been scheduled for a hearing.
I, I appreciate staff's expertise in this, but I think there are legal issues which render it incomplete.
And I would not stop you from raising those issues.
Okay, that's great.
I'm not trying to stop you, but-
Good.
Do we have any jurisdictional issues, not legal argument pertaining to the merits of the application, jurisdictional in nature only?
Well, the fundamental threshold issue is whether or not this applicant is entitled to come before this board absent certain things that he's failed to do.
Okay. So, Chairman, me and Mr. Pellino will sit here for hours talking in circles.
We've, we've gotten used to this, I think.
What is the first threshold issue that you would like to raise, Mr. Pellino?
Well, the first threshold issue is-
We have an issue with notice, do you have a problem with the notice? Have you been provided the notice?
Uh, I believe we were provided with notice, that's correct.
Okay. Is there anything about the notice that you've found to be defective in nature?
No, no, there's no, there's no claim of not having been notified.
Okay, so, counsel, do you have your original notice?
I do.
Can I have it?
Absolutely.
This is the entire package, which was filed on October 9th, 2024, do you want just the notice out of it?
I want the entire package. So Chairman, what we're gonna do is, we are gonna mark the notice as A1 for identification. I believe the notice is in order, and I believe that based on notice, this application belongs before the board. However, counsel has some threshold issues that he would like to articulate, will give Mr. Assadorian an opportunity to respond to those issues, and we will proceed accordingly. So-
Sure.
Thank you, counsel.
Do you-
Floor is yours, counsel.
I, I have a copy of my letter to the board with me, if you want someone to make copies of it, or I can make copies and send it to you post, uh, post this hearing, it's up, it's entirely up to you. Well, it isn't entirely up to you, excuse me, I will, I will do that, because I think it, it enhances the record for wherever this may go at a later date.
I would, I would object, uh, Mr. Lampy, he's here, he could raise whatever arguments. I haven't been provided a copy of the letter from his office, the board hasn't provided a copy, it wasn't updated to the portal, the public was not provided with a copy, he could make whatever arguments he wants to make, I don't see why the letter would come in, the letter itself is not evidence.
A writing of person, a person in objection to an application does not go into the record? I've never heard of that, I've not heard of that. Maybe you can enlighten me on that.
So, my position is, I have not read the letter, the board has not read the letter, we are here, and we are going to proceed as if the letter has not been received and read, because it has not been read.
Objection number one.
Fair. But you're gonna now articulate what is in your letter, and-
Hopefully with the same degree of clarity as my letter, but I would think that a writing that embodies and memorializes my argument, just as a brief before a judge does that, despite the fact that you may have oral argument before a judge, is something that should be part of the record. So if you will not have the letter as part of the record, then that will be my first threshold objection.
I think every judge is going to agree that you don't submit the brief, sir reply, or any other document as you're walking into oral argument.
Correct.
But, for the record, it's noted, the objection.
Okay.
Floor is yours, counsel.
Floor is mine.
Threshold issue.
May I have the dais, the, uh-
I don't think Mr. Assadorian's giving you the dais. Or the podium, I should say.
Okay, then I'll hold my documents in front of me.
Okay.
If I drop them, you'll excuse me.
Your learned counsel will immediately pick those up.
This is, this is a, uh, this is a property, uh, that is, uh, the subject to what I call a structural or commercial condominium. In other words, it's not, it's not condominium units. The entire property is divided into condominium units, right? So, here, there are actually, at the start of the game in 2013, for, as a condominium, there were two, uh, condominium units, master unit one, which, uh, later embodied the two vantage towers, um, and master unit two, which embodied a potential hotel. The, uh, master, the master units, um, are both, of course, uh, subject to and become documents, become effective documents by virtue of the establishment of a condominium, uh, master deed. And that condominium master deed has terms. One of those terms, and, and this is, of course, as a condominium, it has the same, just like an apartment house, it has the same, uh, characteristics, there are, for instance, common elements, elements that are commonly owned, that are, uh, operated or dealt with through a condominium association. All of those things were set up here, so you had two condominium units, the vantage towers, and then this open piece of land, which was, um, to be developed as a hotel. At the time that the master deed was entered into in 2013, and recorded a couple of days, couple of months later, the, the, um, the property was, uh, the terms of the master deed were set forth in the master deed, and one of those terms is simply this, that the master deed is subject to a redevelopment plan as it then existed, not a redevelopment plan as subsequently amended, which was done here, but as it existed then in 2013, what did that plan show? The plan showed two residential towers, and it showed in, in a big black rectangle on a map that it was a hotel. The entire redevelopment plan refers to the hotel, as a matter of fact, the entire master deed refers to the hotel. So shot through the dock- So shot through the document is that. That's the general background. I can go into greater detail, but if you ask questions, I'll respond to them, but for this purpose, I don't think that that's necessary. Common areas include the area in which buildings and units are located. Common areas in this case require the consent of the unit owners or the association through which the unit owners operate, to consent to the application. There is no consent in this case. What happened was basically that it was ignored. The percentage of interest of the parties is something like 87% is in unit, master unit A, my client's units, and 16% I may have got the mathematics wrong, but it's close to that, 16% for master unit two. So the threshold issue from the get-go is there's no consent to go forward. The second issue that I would raise is that there is, as I said, under the master deed, there's a requirement that that be a hotel. Now, you may view that, and understandably view that, as a contractual issue. That's between the parties of the units, right? So my position is, well, that is the case, but it's also not the case. If there is no right to proceed, because it's not permitted under the master deed, then he should not be before you. It doesn't have the lawful basis, the fundamental basis, the ownership of the property and the right to go forward that anybody else would have. The third issue that I'll raise to you. If you look at the application, you will see that there's a reference to parking, an important issue with respect to high rises, especially in this case, the application before you is a 30-story residential building instead of a 16-story hotel. The application says, in the section where it talks about parking, it says existing. Well, such parking does not exist. There is no parking that allows 200 spaces for this applicant. A threshold issue which cannot be overcome, because he doesn't have the spaces. We don't have the spaces. The spaces are not there. The fourth issue that raises a threshold issue is there is, as I stand here before you, an arbitration proceeding. It's actually scheduled to be heard on Thursday of this week. It's been going on for several months. The arbitrator is hearing, what is he hearing? The arbitrator is hearing two fundamental issues. One is the parking issue. There's a claim, as Mr. Acidorian well knows, that he's entitled to certain amounts of parking. That's disputed. The second issue that's raised before the arbitrator is whether or not he even has the authority to build a hotel, given the language of the master deed. As I said, the master deed, as well as redevelopment plan that was passed at the time the master deed was signed, with no reference to future amendments, by the way, says that this area will be a hotel. By the way, just look at it, what the parties together in 2013, actually well before 2013, this was formerly the Trams Hotel. That was the proposal. The idea was always to have two residential towers in one very smaller hotel. That was the, quote, "configuration" of the property, the planning purposes of the property. What was presented to the planning board when it passed the resolution recommending this to the municipal council, what the municipal council in the end did in fact pass. Two towers, the two vantage towers, the vantage collection they call it, and a hotel. What do we have here before you? An application for a 30-story residential building in place of a hotel. Contrary to the master deed, contrary to the redevelopment plan at the time that it was passed, without parking, with the proceeding going on elsewhere as we speak. It's not like a year down the line. It's on Thursday, and you're hearing a site plan application. So that's the gist of my argument, and I'll stop there.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Acidorian? I guess I'll start with the condo association arguments that he makes. There was a condo association that was formed. It was called the Liberty Harbor North Condominium Association, Inc. I did a search with the New Jersey Department of Treasury, not once, not twice, but three times. I did the search first time on December 5, 2023. What I found out is that the condo association no longer exists. Its charter was revoked on August 16, 2023, for failure to file annual report for two consecutive years. I then did the same search again, and I'll have these marked in a minute. I did the same search again on September 19, 2024. Same result. I then did the search again today to see if the condo association has been reinstated. Same result. It says that its charter has been revoked for not filing annual report for two consecutive years. So this condo association that he's telling you that we need consent from and owns elements and common areas has not existed since August 16, 2023. And, Mr. Lampy, if you would allow me, I would like to mark these as exhibits. And I did actually attach one of these and file it with my affidavit of service. Even though the condo association does not exist, as a courtesy, I still noticed their members and whoever was identified as owners of the condo association when it was formed. And I attached a copy of what I'm referring to in my notice, and it was filed with the portal back on October 8, 2024.
So we will get into markings, but if you could address whatever
Absolutely.
arguments you want to address towards Mr. Polino's position.
Absolutely. So the first argument he made was that we need a written consent from the condo association. It is axiomatic that we cannot get consent from a company that does not exist. The second thing Mr. Paleno said was that we need written consent of the unit owners, meaning his client and the condo association. I just discussed why it's impossible to get written consent from the condo association. Now, assuming written consent was needed pursuant to the master deed that he relies upon, which is not, the master deed specifically states on section 14.1D that the master deed requires consent of a unit owner if a subdivision is filed. And that's the language it uses, subdivision. It does not say anything about site plan. This application does not involve subdivision. It involves a site plan application. Therefore, we do not need consent from either his client or the condo association, if the condo association even existed. And I would like to just read the one paragraph or sentence for you, so you see what I'm saying. Mr. Paleno, if you notice, told you what the condo docs say, but he did not actually take out the deed and read any of the citations. If he did, I think you'd probably have your own interpretation, which may be different from his. So page 37 of the master deed for the Liberty Harbor North Condominium says, "The owners of other units shall execute any application, written authorization, or consent required to apply for and obtain a subdivision approval for the property, provided that the subdivision plan fully conforms with the applicable subdivision and development regulations." This is not a subdivision application. Therefore, his client's written consent is not, only is it not needed, it's inferred that his client consented to a site plan application, because if the master deed specifically carved out a provision for written consent for subdivision, it would have also carved out a provision for written consent for site plan. The fact it specifically carved out only the subdivision and omit the site plan means his client consents by executing the master deed to a site plan application. With respect to common elements, you heard Mr. Paleno tell you that the condo association owns common elements and common areas. However, the master deed tells us otherwise. If you look at the master deed, what the master deed tells us in section 4.1 is that the common element is owned by the condo association for any foundation, footing, slab, structural load-bearing columns, beams, walls, sanitary sewer lines, cables, wires, meters, driveways, and landscaped areas that service and serve more than one unit. This is a two-unit condominium association. My client's property is vacant. It's not developed. So these common areas that he's referring to only service his client, which means they only service one unit, which means there are no common elements, and the condominium association, which is defunct, does not own any common elements or common areas. With respect to his argument for the 200 parking spaces, section 8.6 of their master deed specifically provides my client with 200 parking spaces. It states on page 23, "The owner of master unit two," which is the applicant, my client, "and owners of subunits thereof, which would be under my client, "for their benefit and for the benefit of their tenants, subtenants, employees, guests, licensees, invitees, "shall have a perpetual, unsubordinated easement," quote, "parking easement, for ingress and egress to and from, "and the right to utilize 200 parking spaces located in the garage component "in an area to be mutually agreed upon between the owner of master unit one, Mr. Paleno's client, "or the parking garage owner and my client." The master deed specifically provides my client with 200 spaces. Nowhere over here in this language does it say. It's conditioned upon a hotel or anything else that Mr. Paleno wants you to believe. It only says that my client's entitled to 200 spaces. Mr. Paleno tries to argue use. He's telling you that the use is not permitted. The use is permitted. The use is permitted under the redevelopment plan. The Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan was amended earlier this year. We appeared before this board earlier this year. On February 20 of this year, this board adopted a resolution making a recommendation to the mayor council on March 20, if I found not mistaken, of this year. The Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan was amended to permit a 32-story residential structure at this site, in addition to hotel. The hotel use remained, and the residential structure was added. My client is proposing a 30-story residential structure. It's two stories less than what is allowed. So the use is absolutely permitted. If Mr. Paleno is trying to make some kind of contractual private argument, saying there's a private agreement between the parties that do not permit it, that is different than what he's trying to imply and what he wants you to infer. He wants you to infer that this board lacks jurisdiction based upon the master deed. This board's jurisdiction does not arise out of a private agreement between the parties. This board's jurisdiction arises out of the municipal land use law, and you have the power and the right to hear this application. So with those arguments said, I believe, oh, his arbitration, how can I forget? Mr. Paleno says, "Put this off. We have an arbitration two days from now." As though, what have you got to lose? Just put it off. What he didn't tell you is, this has been going on for years. He has delayed this for years and years. Every time we appeared before the mayor council for the redevelopment plan, he appeared and objected. My client's designated redevelopment with the JCRAT. He wrote a letter objecting. We appeared here in February on the proposed changes to the redevelopment plan to allow residential as a permitted use at the site. He appeared here with expert witnesses, objecting. He filed a lawsuit when the first ordinance was adopted. He already has told you that he's going to appeal this if you grant this application and if you decide to go forward. I suspect he's going to also appeal the arbitration decision if it's not in his favor. So by him saying, "It's only two days away. Just put it off. Don't decide it now. Let's see what happens at ARP," it's a delay tactic, just like he's been delaying for years and years. So with that, I respectfully submit that this board has jurisdiction, that the application is proper, there are no jurisdictional issues, and this board has to wait to proceed to this evening.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Mr. Polino, before you consider responding, and before the chair determines whether you can respond, I don't
Sure.
think it's fair to say that Mr. Polino is doing anything. Mr. Polino obviously represents an interested party, and I just don't want anybody to get the impression that Mr. Polino is doing anything other than advocating for his client who is putting forth these positions. So I just want to make that clear for purposes of the record, so that it is clear for purposes of the record. And I don't think counsel's implying that it's Mr. Polino. I think sometimes it just gets stated because Mr. Polino's the gentleman standing there. Chairman, it is up to you whether you want to give Mr. Polino the opportunity to respond to any of Mr. Acidorian's comments. I would submit to you that Mr. Acidorian is the applicant. Mr. Polino is an interested objector in the application, and it's Mr. Acidorian's application, not Mr. Polino's application. But if you want to indulge him and give him the courtesy of responding to any of those arguments, it is up to the board.
Yeah, in the interest of courtesy, Mr. Paleno, I think you should respond, be cognizant of time, and they were allowing you to do this. I'm fully aware of where we stand with Mr. Acidorian being the presenter here. But if you wanted to argue briefly.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, and I'll go as fast as I can. And you know me, I try to go fast to begin with. So no condo association, its taxes had not been paid. That means absolutely nothing in terms of the legal requirements of both parties. The condo association, I have no idea whether or not they paid or didn't pay their taxes, but that is the only way his client, his own client, can operate in this condominium through the condominium association of which he is a member, as is the master unit one. So there is a condo association. By the way, there are two, there are members of the condominium association who are the owners. They exist. They're not in Russia. They're here in New Jersey. So they're available if there was any issue as to whether or not he had the authority to go forward. So it's silly to say that condominium association didn't pay its taxes. It doesn't exist, because he's contacted the Department of the Treasury three times, as he said before, at the original hearing on the amendment.
Mr. Polino, is your client a master unit owner?
Yes.
And your client has an 87%?
Yes.
Share?
Good, good question, Mr. Lampy.
And Mr. Acidorian's client is a master unit owner?
16%. It's whatever the number is, 13%. Excuse me, it's 12.67, whatever the number is. It's 13 and.
So what is the voting percentage?
Ah, that is the key. The key here is that they have equal voting rights.
Even though your client has a much larger percentage?
Yeah.
So it's one to one?
It's one to one. That's right. That's exactly right.
And obviously, your clients are not in agreement on even keeping the association in good order.
Well, this is the classic lock, you know, lockout. To get a majority, you need the other guy who would agree. And for me to get an agreement, I have to have his client agree. It's a one to one. It's an, if there's a problem like this, it's an impasse immediately.
And it's fair to say that that's what's happening. There's an impasse.
Yeah, that's exactly what's happening.
And now we're litigating.
That's true.
And your client's position is, "I'm not even speaking to you, and I'm not cooperating because I'm objecting to what you're doing." That's your client's position.
Well, also...
Is that your client's position or not, counsel?
Uh, my client was, is, is open to discussions, has been open to discussions. In fact, there was a association meeting at which Mr. Acidorian participated despite the fact that the association that...
But counsel, you are here, you are here representing your client, opposing their site plan application. So not only do you not consent to the application, your client opposes the application.
Yes.
So it's fair to say that your client would never consent to the application?
Well, you know, now that we're talking about hypotheticals, I can't, I can't discuss that.
You're opposing the application?
I'm opposing this application.
Correct.
It's very specific.
So you, your client obviously, not only doesn't, but doesn't consent, he opposes the application. So how could, how could Mr. Acidorian get your client to consent to him moving forward with the application if your client opposes the application? It's an impossibility.
You ask. Well, if, I'll tell you one way. Build what you agreed to build, a hotel. Again, that's not the ask. The ask is, do you consent to me moving forward with a site plan application to build what the redevelopment plan now permits? Your client's position is, "No, I object to it, and we're gonna litigate whatever issues we have between us." That's your client's position, is it not? Mr. Olhapi, that's, uh, that's obvious. That's, we object to the application for building anything other than what's set forth in the master deed. That's what our position is. Remarkably enough, if they, if they agree that the master deed terms should be abided by. That's the, that's the issue. The master deed has terms. Those terms should be abided by. May I address the other issues quickly? Because he did say other things.
Please.
So, common area definition. Common area definition is a, it's not meant to be an exclusive list of what's common areas. It's meant to be a list. Structures, piping, electrical, that's all common. Doesn't mean there are other things that are not common areas. Land is a common area. There's no question about that, it didn't need to be recited. The eight hundred, the, the 200 parking spaces he makes reference to, that was to build a hotel. You get 200 spaces, my friend, if you build a hotel. You don't build a hotel, you build a thirty-story high-rise instead of a sixteen-story hotel, you don't get 200 spaces. The master deed addresses that issue. It doesn't address an issue that him, his building something else. It just says 200 spaces is for this kind of a project. Not that kind of a project. That would be silly. You'd have to, you'd have to, you only can say what you intend to build, and that's what the parking is for. Yes, there are 200 spaces, subject to whatever the documents say, for a hotel. He's not building a hotel. The next issue, is the use permitted? The use is not permitted if the master deed doesn't allow the use to be, to, to go forward. It doesn't permit anything other than a hotel. The plan doesn't permit anything other than a hotel, except as, as it was amended several months ago. That's the, that's, that's the first time the hotel was, was, was superseded by or added to for a residential building, which counsel indicated before this board, "We wanna leave that hotel as a permitted use there, 'cause we might come back to you and actually build a hotel." Well, we knew then, and you're finding out now, that it was never meant to be a hotel. It was meant to, meant by this client to be a thirty-story residential building. The next issue was, the arbitration. I, I don't know what to say. Years, Mr. Acidorian says, "I've been at this for years and years." As far as I know, I haven't, because I've been billing for years and years. I've been billing on this for probably, and, uh, less than a year, on this issue. Okay, so I don't know what, what Mr. Acidorian is talking about. Arbitration. If this arbitration is, is, is against him, I'm gonna appeal that. He doesn't even read the arbitration clause. The arbitration says it's final, it's done. The arbitrator makes a decision, it's not appealable. I can't go to any other court. That's it. So that's the problem with arbitration, so, in some cases. So everything that Mr. Acidorian has said, first to last, wrong facts, completely slanted the wrong way. That's it, thank you. I don't have to respond anymore.
I just wanna add one thing, because I think you guys would like this. What he didn't tell you is that I don't represent this client in arbitration proceedings. He has another firm. He knows that. I have nothing to do with the arbitration. But he's making it sound as though I'm representing him in the arbitration, I'm not telling you stuff. I have nothing to do with the arbitration whatsoever. I just know it's on for two days from now. But thanks for that, Gene.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Got it, gentlemen, yep. Counsel, you have any words of wisdom?
I know what I wanna say.
So chairman, it is obvious to everybody in the room and anybody watching on the computer, over the internet, that Mr. Acidorian's client and Mr. Palino's client have very different versions of what's going on here, what's permitted here. They have a dispute. Mr. Acidorian has an application. This board's jurisdiction comes from the MLUL. It does not come from the master deed. It does not come from the association and governing documents that their clients may be bound by, may amend, may change. So as far as this body is concerned, with respect to whether or not a residential structure is permitted in this redevelopment plan, everybody will recall, we sat here, listened to the request to amend the redevelopment plan, the opposition, we went through how height was measured. There was a recommendation by this body to the governing body who actually has the ability to amend redevelopment plans. The plan was amended to permit the residential use under the redevelopment plan. Whether or not it's permitted under the master deed, apparently, sounds like it's gonna be decided by an arbitrator, and it's gonna be binding on the parties whenever that decision is made. Quite frankly, has nothing to do with us. That's something that they can work out. With respect to whether or not, in a two-unit condominium where everybody has equal voting rights, so let's forget the percentages, they have equal voting right. For whatever reason, it sounds like that document did not consider what happens when everybody doesn't agree, and we have a stalemate situation. Sound familiar to anybody, when you can't get something across the goal line? Mr. Palino's never gonna consent. His client is opposed to the application. That's why Mr. Palino's here, he's opposing the application. He's here, he can put forth whatever arguments he wants from a zoning perspective. I think the application should move forward with Mr. Palino objecting along the way. When the arbitration happens, whatever happens, this may all be for naught if it's determined by the arbitrator that Mr. Acidorian's client does not own the property, is not permitted to develop the property. But that is not for this body to attempt to figure out. And that's, that's my advice, chairman.
Thank you, counsel. Yeah, I'll, I'll open it up to, uh, to the, uh, to my commissioners here. I for one agree, um, we are bound here by the MLUL. Not with the master deed, we're not arguing or, or doing any of that here today. And Mr. Palino, you know, you, the, the fact too, that the, I didn't even know about this letter. Um, I do try to look at what's going on in the portal, and I didn't see the letter, so this was kinda surprise. I don't really like those kind of surprises. I'm not saying you did anything wrong there, I just didn't have the letter. I didn't know about it until...
I, I understand that.
Yeah. Um, and, um, you know, your, your points are fair. I, again, my job, and again, I always rely on, on, uh, on our counsel. The way I see it, you know, do we, can we go forward and you can object to the application? I think that's the way to go. And I, again, I'm not speaking for my commissioners, I'm just speaking for myself. They will tell you what they think. Um, but, but I think that we should go forward, uh, listen to Mr. Acidorian's application. As of, it is your right to do that, you were on the docket to do that, we called you up. You weren't here at that time, but it's okay, 'cause I was stuck in that same issue. Um, and, you know, and then we'll figure out, uh, later on what happens in arbitration. But, uh, that, that's my two cents. Um, and I'll, uh, open it up to our commissioners.
I concur, um, chair, I think we should proceed with the application.
Okay.
I agree, we should move forward.
I will.
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Acidorian?
That's it.
Can we take a break or no? I don't know if you...
Yeah, we can take a break, we can always take a break.
Yeah, we're gonna, do you mind if we take a little break here for, it's been a little tough for our guy here down here. All right, we'll take a ten-minute break, guys, and come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Affordable, uh, we are proposing eighty-five studio, twenty-six one-bedroom, seventy-eight two-bedroom, and eleven three-bedroom rental units. The property is located within the Liberty Harbor, Liberty Harbor North redevelopment area. When we filed the application, we originally asked for, uh, a variance and a deviation. The deviation is for a maximum floor to ceiling height. Under the redevelopment plan, the max ceiling height allowed is fifteen feet. My client asks that one of the floors only be, uh, extended to nineteen point three-three feet to accommodate a basketball court. Um, the other variance that we asked for was for the number of street trees. Uh, four street trees were proposed, seven street trees is the minimum required. My understanding is that the applicant can make a contribution to forestry, uh, division, which will eliminate the need for the variance. My client has agreed to make that contribution. Therefore, that variance is no longer required. Uh, so as a result, we are basically, uh, what you may call an as-of-right application, with the exception of the one deviation for the basketball court. So with that said, I would like to call my first witness, who is the architect, Dean Marchetto.
Thank you. Yes, I do. My name is Dean Marchetto, and spelled M-A-R-C-H-E-T-T-O.
Mr. Marchetto, we've qualified you in the past.
Yes.
Your license is current?
Yes, it is.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
You're qualified.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting a, a design for a thirty-story residential building at Liberty Harbor North. And I'm going to be presenting several slides that are taken from the application and the submitted drawings that were on file in the show. There are no new images in this presentation.
Mr. Marchetto, do you know how many slides are in the deck? 'Cause I'd still like to mark it for purposes of the record.
Let me just, uh, fourteen, no, thirteen, thirteen images.
And is it titled and dated?
It's titled and dated on my, uh, application, uh, my computer. I, I, I could give you a PDF of it.
Yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to submit it, obviously, after the hearing, but it's the Liberty Harbor North Block Twenty-four, proposed thirty-story building.
Mm-hmm. The title is at the top, counsel, Liberty Harbor North Block Twenty-four Visual Impact Assessment.
Fated April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Okay, thank you. Eight-two.
So the, um, the proposed project is in the Liberty Harbor North Redevelopment Plan. It's, um, known as Block Twenty-four, and it's also known as Lot Three C zero 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 two Lot on the tax map. And the property is point three-five acres, it's fifteen thousand three hundred square feet. The first image here comes from the front page of the visual impact assessment that was, that was submitted, and, and, and this, uh, drawing is intended to show you the location. So I could, uh, zoom in here. That blue square rectangle is the site. Uh, the site is, um, surrounded by four streets. The fronting street on the south is South, is, is South Cove, and the street to the right is Maron Boulevard. The one to the left is Saint, Saint Peter Street. And the one behind us is Parkview Avenue. As you heard earlier, this is one portion of a block that is primarily developed already with two residential towers, forty-five-story towers. This is a vacant piece of property, um, and it is, um, being proposed to put in, uh, in a hotel, I mean, a residential building of three hundred units. The property originally, as you also heard, was scheduled to be a hotel, and no, uh, hotel was developed over the sixteen years of the project, uh, and the redevelopment plan. So we petitioned the board and the city council to come before you and say, since a hotel was never built, the demand for a hotel didn't exist, and the council and the board saw it fit to re, re, uh, rezone it for permission to put not only a hotel, but to include a residential building. The plan that I'm presenting to you today, at thirty stories with three hundred units, is completely as-of-right. The bulk is all as-of-right. There are no deviations except for a ceiling height, which I'll explain towards the end of the presentation. This photograph comes from the planners exhibit. This is an aerial photograph looking down at the site. You could see the two forty-five-story towers, uh, known as the Vantage, and you could see that empty space that's been vacant, uh, since this project has been built. And the proposal would be to put the, uh, new residential building in that spot. This is the first page of the architectural site plan set, and this gives you a, a quick rendition of what the building looks like. Building is thirty stories, it has a ground floor retail space and lobby. The second and third floor are amenities and residential units. And the building, uh, proceeds up to thirty stories. The next exhibit here is A zero two point oh-one, which is our ground floor plan. And in this plan, you could see how the building fronts on, on, um, South Cove Street. The lobby is, is in the blue color on the right, and, um, to the left of the lobby is a retail space. So one would enter in the lobby, you can see that there are, um, elevators here, there's a mailroom, and, um, there's a package room. To the right of the lobby is a bike room. The bike room, uh, holds one hundred and fifty parking spaces, uh, bikes, bicycle spaces, spaces, excuse me. And that is what's required, it meets the requirement for bicycles. And you could see on the bottom of the page, we have, uh, a bicycle rack to accommodate, uh, the bicycles and how they would be installed and accommodated in the bike room. There's also on the left side of the plan, in this light gray area, a loading dock and an overhead door, so a, a loading truck could come in, access the back of the elevator, and have some, um, recycling and mechanical spaces on the ground floor as well. The next image is the second floor plan. And, um, in this floor plan, you could see that the building, as it goes up above the lobby, has a curve in it. So it's not simply a rectangular building. It's a building that has a little bit of a bump out on the ends and a curve to create, uh, a nice architectural, uh, feature in the design. So it's not simply a rectangle. And you were able to see that in the rendering as well. You'll see that, uh, there are two different color, uh, residential units. The units are shown in a, in a yellow color, and a light yellow color, and even lighter. And what they represent is studio units, one bedrooms, and two-bedroom units, and some... And of those units, there are four studio units, five one-bedroom units, 27 two-bedroom units, and nine three-bedroom affordable units. As you heard as well, there are 200 parking spaces in the building behind us. There's a podium with two towers, as you saw in the photo, and in that podium is a garage that accommodates 200 parking spaces for this project. You'll see also on the second floor that there's a, in a kind of lavender color behind the residential units, two stories of amenities. And one of, one of the floors, as you can see here on the left, has a basketball court. And so without changing the height of the building, what we're proposing to do is just lift the ceiling up to the floor above it at the basketball court and create a double-height space. By doing so, technically, we need a deviation because the highest floor height can be 15 feet, and we're up around 19, 19 feet for, to accommodate the basketball court. So it has no negative effect on the building, it's simply just removing the ceiling upwards and occupying part of the space above to accommodate the basketball court because of the height needed for that amenity. The plan pretty much is typical all the way up, some floors have 11 units, some floors have 12, but they typically double-loaded corridor like this, the curve goes all the way up, and you see that there's an elevated corridor stair and a corridor down the middle. This particular floor plan I'm showing you here is a fifth-floor plan, so this is where the building steps back from the podium, and those units on the fifth-floor plan, which you can see wrapped around the back, is a private deck for the units at that level, which is at the fifth-floor level. And as I said, this goes up from 5 all the way up to floor 29. On floor 30, this is another amenity space, the building steps back, there's a roof terrace up there, common roof terrace for the residents, it has a pool and an outdoor space for recreation. It also has an interior amenity on that floor, which is shown in, in the, in the light lavender And above that is our roof plan. The roof plan, you know, has our mechanical equipment, which will all be screened from the building behind us and to the right. The building has a full screen, and the mechanicals would be up on the roof. This is in elevation, but you could see the building, I think, more accurately in the rendering. This elevation shows the floor heights from floor to floor, shows the building at a height of 316 feet to the top of the roof, and another 20 feet to the top of the mechanical bulkhead, so the total height from ground to roof is 316 and 4 inches, and to the top of the mechanicals is 336 and 4, and 4 inches. As you heard earlier, the, the building isn't allowed and be permitted to be 32 stories. The building is being proposed at 30 stories, we didn't use the full height. On this page as well, you'll see indication of materials, you'll also see some details for the railings that would be surrounding the private terraces and up on the roof deck. It is important to note, I think it's the board's concern, that the railing that you have, won't have a flat handrail, it'll be a rounded handrail, so no one can place any cups or drinks on there, so that there is no danger of something falling off. It's, and, and on the, on the fifth floor, which is on the podium level, the railing height is 48 inches, and way up on the roof deck, it's 5 feet, it's 60 inches, to make sure that there is safety involved on a roof deck at that height. And that's common for buildings of this type. It's also important to note in this drawing, I think you could see it here, and maybe even more so on the next, the mechanical equipment is shielded with a screen, but it's not just a mesh, it's a, it's a designer material of metal, it's just curved to create a nice texture, so that the building has a very nice metal top. Okay, so this is a little bit of a detail of the elevations, and what you can see here is a series of windows, and the basic superstructure of the building has a metal framing system with windows and, and glass. It's really a two-material, two-material tower. There are some additional materials that occur on, on the lower level, which you could see on the lower left. The tower is pushed forward, the podium is pushed back so that the tower can land directly on the ground, and as the podium gets pushed back, we have a dark, I guess it's a stone, stone material, and then to get into the bike room and some of the mechanicals, we covered that up with a green screen type of door opening to, to kind of make it more of a, of a setback. On the left, on the lower level, this is where our loading dock is, you could see at this, this point here, this is our overhead door, and then there are some mechanical rooms here with matching colored louvers and ventilation. The main lobby door is here, and that's the main entrance, and then above the main entrance, at the top of the, the first floor, there's an awning that's, that cantilever's out to protect the sidewalk, and the entire awning and the, and the ground floor has got that curve, so the whole building has this curve. Now, as the building curves back, the ends come out, the points that come out are, in fact, called bay windows, but the, the part of the building that steps back does not allow us, we're not getting any more square footage, we're just moving the building forward and backward, and we're creating bay windows on the corners to create this nice curve in the facade of the building.
Dean, do you have a, do you have a proposed picture that you could show, an exhibit to, to show what you're describing?
I do. It's, it's, it's an additional exhibit, it's not one that was submitted with the, with the application. I don't think I need it unless there are questions asked, but if, but if you'd like me to show it, I would. What Greg Astadurian is asking me is, is there another rendering that you have of the base? And I do. It wasn't something that was part of the application.
Let's see it, Mr. Marchetto.
You'd like to see it?
Mm-hmm.
So, this, this view is a ground-level view, it gives you a better idea of what that feels like at the ground floor. You could see how the lobby is recessed, there are pilasters that come down, and there's an awning that takes that curvilinear shape. You could see how the setback part of the building here is pushed back in the podium to let the front of the building push forward and land on the ground. It's just an architectural design element that I think makes the building more interesting. You could see also on the superstructure up above, the metal mullions that change, that frame the windows and the floor lines, cover the floor slabs, have a shape to them, so it's an elegant, an elegant design. And the materials here were shown on, I'll go back to.
Before you. Let's mark that as A3.
Thank you.
And if you could just.
This is A3 here.
Excellent. How would you describe it, Mr. Marchetto?
Ground-floor rendering.
Thank you.
So let me just go back to where I was. This here was where we had left off, this shows you elevation, gives you floor-to-floor heights, but I actually took the opportunity to blow up the corner on the upper right so you could see the materials. You could see the windows here are shown as silver-framed windows with a, with a darker window in the darker base, if I, that shows where the, the stone is. You could also see here the glass, and then this stone here is the cladding on the bottom of the podium, and then the canopy itself that projects over the sidewalk, the underside of that cabin, canopy is, is a wood material, which you could see here in this brownish color, and then this is a section of the glass, and then this is just a photograph of what the green, the green wall would be. And that'll be a planted wall to kind of create a green base to the sides of the building. I didn't put all the units up, but this is a sample page, we laid out all the apartments, the ones, the twos, the threes, but rather than go through every single unit, I just wanted to show you an example of some of the apartments, so you could see the dimensions, and, you know, the application is required to present unit layouts. So here we have the unit layout, it's showing the interior, bathroom, kitchen bedrooms and, and related dimensions. And then finally, I just wanted to conclude on this final image, which allows you, again, look at the entire building, and you could see, the building is catty-corner to the two existing residential buildings behind us that are 4, 45 stories. So instead of them all being in line, the building that we're proposing, because of where it is, is pushed forward, so it doesn't directly block anybody's views from the other two buildings on the block. So if each, each building doesn't have a building in front of it, it's catty-corner, so they look past each other. I think that was probably considered when the plan was drawn up, because it works. And that, that's a general description of the plan, includes my testimony on the design of the building.
I just want to add one question. The ground level is going to be commercial, right?
There's a retail space of 899 square feet, like retail spaces.
It's a mixed-use building.
Mixed-use, yes.
Thank you.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
It's a state that the 200 parking spaces is off-site, where is that located?
Oh, on the block, there is the two towers, on the base of the two towers behind us is the parking. So it's on the same block, it's right behind us, you have to walk down to the lobby, come out, go into the garage entrance, right on the same block. It's, in fact, the parking garage touches the back of our building.
And the affordable units are fitted as same as the other regular?
Oh, yes, yes.
That was my question.
Chris question.
That was a Chris question, yes.
Yeah, I have a question. How are you going to get rid of the trash? Do you have a compactor?
Yes, we have a compactor.
And this in the garage or your separate place?
At the base of our building, we have a mechanical room and a waste receptacle and a, and a compactor with dumpsters that will store the garbage until it's removed.
And another question, you have 45 units, restricted affordable units, what does that mean?
There's 40, oh, there's 45 units that have a lower rent, as per the standards set by the Housing Commission, but you, you, you know.
Yeah, the, the IZO that was passed requires new development to have, to provide affordable housing units. This is actually going to be the first project in the Liberty Harbor North Redevelopment Plan to provide affordable housing units. So we are proposing 300 units, out of that 300, 45 is going to be.
15%.
15% is going to be reserved only for low-income people, and I could give you the actual breakdown if you'd give me a second.
He told us, yeah.
We, we filed an application with the Jersey City Department of Housing, Economic Development and Commerce, and it was approved for the 45 affordable housing units. And the breakdown of the affordable is going to be, six of the units are going to be very low-income, and out of those six, one is going to be studio, one is going to be one-bedroom, three are going to be two-bedroom, and one two-bedroom. Then there's going to be 18 low-income, out of that, those, out of those 18, it's going to be one-studio, two-one-bedroom, 11-two-bedroom, and four-three-bedroom. And then there's going to be another 21 moderate-income units, and the breakdown for that is two-studio, two-one-bedroom, 13-two-bedroom, and four-three-bedroom. And like I said, we filed an application with the Department of Housing, Economic Development and Commerce, and this is what they approved, this is what they suggested and approved.
Any other questions?
One question with regard to the request to pay into the tree fund as opposed to plant the trees, what's the justification for that?
The dimension of the property and the garage doors won't allow us to place the tree. Where, where, they require them every 25 feet, so we, because of the doors, the vehicle entrance, you can't fit them in, technically you can't fit them in.
I understand that, I just didn't see that in the presentation, that's why I'm asking.
Well, yeah, it was put in the presentation, I think it was not a variance that we needed to ask for, because we're providing the, the, yeah, the.
No, I understand that, but part of the spirit of the paying into the fund is if you cannot do it, you are still required to do it, not because you, there should still be some justification for it, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Marchetto, thank you.
Do you want to open?
Yes.
Did you just say you have no questions?
No, I said I have.
I was ready to place a bet.
Please, Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Marchetto.
Good evening.
Mr. Marchetto, did you review the master deed here at all?
I did not.
Did you look at any document that referred to parking in, in the project area for this project?
I, I personally did not, no.
You did not? So you were simply advised that there'd be 200 spaces, is that it?
In the garage, yes.
Do you know who's entitled to parking spaces?
I believe.
That supposedly exists.
Yeah, I, I believe that the, my client is entitled to the spaces.
But you don't have any independent knowledge of that?
No, I don't.
Okay. The, would you agree that the redevelopment plan was amended in March of 2024, seven months ago?
It was around March, I can't be sure of what date, but it was earlier this year. I wouldn't disagree, it was earlier this year, I remember, yeah.
Were you, are you familiar with the original redevelopment plan?
I am.
Okay. Would you be permitted to build a 30-story residential building under the original redevelopment plan?
I'm going to object, it's irrelevant.
It's not irrelevant, sir. So I don't know that it's irrelevant, I don't know that it's appropriate for this witness. Mr. Marchetto, can you answer the question?
I can say.
As a matter of fact, I, I, I agree with you in terms of, there are other witnesses that might be able to answer the same question, the planner, but I don't know whether or not a planner is testifying, so I have to ask it of this witness. I'm assuming that there will be, but.
That's why I didn't overrule you.
He's here.
So, Mr. Marchetto, can you answer the question?
Yes, I, the previous zoning for this site, before it was amended, allowed a building of this height, 300 and, 336 feet high. So it was a different number of stories because the floor heights were different, and I made that case in front of this board, but the building did not get any taller than what we just permitted before.
Oh, didn't it require a 16-story hotel?
Yeah, with taller ceilings.
With, do you know of any hotel that has taller ceilings? What size ceilings would they be required to make?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
Well, it does matter.
It doesn't matter, the building that was allowed to be built, this building is no taller than that building. There are more floors because the floors are shorter, but the building size, the size of the box, is identical.
Okay, Mr. Marchetto, I won't argue with you with, on that, although there is disagreement on that subject. If there is, there was no existing parking on the site, is, did you, did you design for parking somewhere else?
There is parking on the block. I didn't design it, it's in an existing facility.
I'm not sure I understood your answer. If there was no parking existing on the site that you counted on, that you assumed, was, does your, does your plan provide for parking anywhere else?
No.
I didn't, I didn't see, do you have a, did you submit a rendering or a picture of the three buildings together?
I did.
Okay, I must have missed that.
I have, I have the two buildings alone, and then I have this one showing two of the buildings in this rendering.
But not the three buildings on the site together?
In plan?
Yeah. was, does your plan provide for parking anywhere else?
No.
I didn't, I didn't see. Do you have a, did you submit a rendering or a picture of the three buildings together?
I did.
Okay. I must have missed that.
I have the, I have the two buildings alone. And then I have this one showing two of the buildings in this rendering.
But not the three buildings on the site together?
In plan?
Yeah.
I believe we have that.
I didn't see it, but I might have missed it. Oh, that, that, that picture?
Yeah.
That doesn't show the proposed building?
It does. It's the blue box. And the two towers that are.
It was a swimming pool.
So, yes, this is an aerial view. It was my opening slide. Shows the two towers that are there, the podium that surrounds, and the, and the blue building is our building that's being proposed between them.
You don't have an elevation of the three buildings together, is that right? That's probably what I should have said.
I don't, no.
So the relative sizes of the three buildings on one lot, you don't have?
No. I could say that this building is quite a bit smaller than the other two, if that helps you.
How big, how tall the other story is?
Forty-five.
And this is what?
Thirty.
Fifteen stories difference?
Yes.
My math must be good. Did you do a shadow study?
I did.
And that was submitted in the portal?
Yes.
You may have answered this in a response to Commissioner, but the affordable housing units, the 45 affordable housing units, that was triggered by the inclusionary zoning ordinance, was it not?
Yes.
Okay. That was not a voluntary number?
That's required by the ordinance, yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Marchetto, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone here from the public? No, we're, no, we'll, we'll ask that at the end, Mr. Asidorian. Our normal way of doing it. That's all right, don't worry.
My next witness will be my engineer, Tiago Duarte.
I do. Tiago Duarte, D-U-A-R-T-E.
Tiago, can you please provide the board with the benefit of your educational background?
Sure. I graduated Rutgers University in 2011 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. Been practicing in the field of civil engineering, specifically land development, for the last 13 years. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey, and my licenses are current as of this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Duarte. You are qualified.
Thank you.
Civil Engineering Council?
Yes. Did you prepare any materials as part of this application?
Yes, I prepared the, the site plans that were submitted with the application.
Can you bring that up and we can mark them and you can walk the board through them?
Yes. So up on the screen is the site plan PDF that was filed with the application. Consists of 14 sheets.
Are these all the site plan drawings that were submitted with the application? Or do you have an actual slide deck that's a mix-mash?
These are the plans that were filed.
All right. So, counsel, only things that were compiled for purposes of presentation will mark. So these were submitted and are on the portal. They don't need to be marked for the proceeding.
Fair enough. Can you please walk the board through your plans?
Yeah. Actually, I do have an exhibit. It's a site plan rendering. Probably just work off of that since you just heard a lot about the building. So we'll just focus in on the, the site plan.
All right, so counsel, we're up to A4.
And this is entitled Site Plan Rendering with today's date. And I do have a hard copy if you need that for the record or.
You're going to have to submit it electronically.
Okay, we'll do. What this plan shows is basically just a colorized version of the site plan sheet that was filed with the application. Just gives it a little more texture. As you heard, the site is located at 20 South Cove. It's block 15907, Lot 3C0002. The site is approximately 15,300 square feet, as you heard earlier from Mr. Marchetto. It is undeveloped currently, consisting of just grass areas. There is a asphalt pavement along the front of the site within South Cove right-of-way. And what we are proposing to do, as you again just heard, is to develop the site with a 30-story building, within the, with, develop the undeveloped lot with the 30-story building. The site improvements that we're proposing along with that construction is to redo the sidewalk improvements along the South Cove right-of-way for the frontage of the site. We will replace the asphalt sidewalk that's there with pavers and concrete for a more traditional sidewalk design. Part of that includes a 14-and-a-half-foot driveway that gives access to the loading area on the ground floor, ground floor of the building, that is. On the ground floor, you also just heard, you've got a retail space and access to the various support areas of the building, the trash, mailroom.
Can you zoom in on that for?
On the, sure. So zooming in, on the left, that is the 14-and-a-half-foot driveway to the loading area, the electrical room along the frontage, got the retail space, the lobby for the residential, bike parking, package room, storage, all things, the architect just, just walked the board through. As part of the application, you also heard about the street trees that we are proposing. We have four proposed, where seven are required. Those are shown in the green, call it circles, in the right-of-way along the paver area of the sidewalk. The requirement for the trees is seven, based on the lot frontage. But again, we've got a driveway to, to consider, we've got existing light poles, two of which we're maintaining. We are relocating one for the driveway. And then we've got our utilities that are entering the building, so we do have an open space in the middle without a tree. But again, we need clearance for all the utilities that are serving the building. Stormwater management, we are now proposing a basin on this site. We are considered a major development in, under the New Jersey DEP regulations and under the Jersey City regulations. However, this is considered clean runoff and is tributary to a tidal water body, so we don't need to provide a detention system because the Marlin Boulevard outfall is directly downstream of this building. As part of utilities, we have all new utilities serving the building, so we've got electrical, water, and sewer facilities. On the lighting, as I just mentioned, we are relocating one of the three existing light poles, and that's going to be adjacent to the driveway. And that is, that's really it as far as site plan. It's a smaller site, and it is going to be all developed with the, the building, as you heard.
Thank you, Mr. Duarte.
Is there anything else you'd like to add before you field questions?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Pallino?
Yes.
I don't know whether you're the right person to answer, answer the question. Did you do a traffic impact study for this property?
We did. And it was filed, it was filed with the application, yes.
Where is the entrance to the parking garage? For this project?
For this project.
For your residence?
It is to the side of the building.
What side?
The entrance to the, there's a parking deck on the overall block that's accessed through, there's an entrance on South Cove and on the opposite side of.
From the street level?
At the street level.
The, I don't know whether you received this. It's part of the portal. It's, it's the view from the Department of Infrastructure, Division of Transportation Planning. Let me show you this document before I ask.
Why don't you show it to counsel first? Asidorian, have you seen that document before?
No, actually I have not.
Well.
Wait, Mr. Pallino.
Sure.
Can I see? I was about to deliver it to you.
I thought I saw it. So, Mr. Asidorian, for purposes of the record, the document that Mr. Pallino is holding is the September 9th, 2024 memorandum from the City of Jersey City Department of Infrastructure, Division of Transportation Planning, which was uploaded to the portal. And again, it's dated September 9th, 2024.
Yeah, understood. I don't know why it never came through to me, but I acknowledge.
Absolutely. I suspect the witness hasn't seen it either, but maybe he has.
I was going to show it.
Let's find out. Sir, have you seen that document?
Just now, yes. Previously, I have not.
Very good. Did you, so you had no ability to review this with, with your client?
Not previously, no.
Have, it does, the application refers to 200, 200 existing parking spaces. But the spaces are not included in the site plan review, is that right? Spaces themselves, the 200 spaces.
They are provided on the, the block, the overall block where the project site is located.
Allocation is not indicated, right? Sir, let me help you. Does your drawing show the 200 parking spaces?
It does not, no.
Thank you. No other questions?
Commissioners, do we have any questions? From Mr. Duarte, anyone?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duarte. Mr. Asidorian?
Thank you. I have one final witness. I'm going to call Dean Marchetto again, but this time as a planner, not as an architect.
Come on, counsel. Objection! I thought you were asking me to talk to you like a conference. Yes, I object to it. This, this witness was never put forward, anything other than an architectural expert. And now he's a planner?
He testified in the field of architecture because he's an architect. He's also a licensed planner. We went through architecture, we did engineering, and now we're doing planning.
You don't have a planner.
He is my planner. He's a planner.
You don't have a separate planner, is that what I'm saying?
I don't have to have a separate planner. He's a licensed planner. What's the objection?
The objection is, when you presented Mr. Marchetto, you did not identify him as a planner as well as an architect. Granted, the gentleman may hold a planning license. Mr. Pallino, as a courtesy to this board, wanted to ask some planning questions, which I cut him off for because the gentleman is a architect witness, and now he's being called to give planning testimony. So Mr. Pallino rightfully says, wait a minute, I was prepared to ask questions before, and I feel maybe this was a little unfortunate. That being said, we're going to have Mr. Marchetto sworn in, or while he's still under oath, so we'll recognize him. He's going to give us his qualifications as a planner. Counsel, do you want to challenge Mr. Marchetto's licensure as a planner? But it comes as a surprise that Mr. Mr. Asidorian did not identify him as a planner. But go forward with the, with your, with your expertise, your background, I guess. We'll go on from there. Thank you, Mr. Pallino.
Okay.
Your planning license number.
The, the statement of principal points that you have, excuse me, the application, the GDA, lists the planner as John McDonough.
I could have sworn I saw Mr. McDonough earlier tonight.
I don't know what happened. He had to leave.
That's a problem.
Lucky for me, I have a Dean Marchetto who's also a planner. He's licensed.
Perhaps lucky for you, perhaps not lucky for you. I assume there's a report somewhere from the planner or from Mr. Marchetto with respect to his statement of principal points or something that would allow me to review his testimony. So, counsel, obviously, if Mr. Marchetto is going to offer planning testimony in lieu of Mr. McDonough, who I. No, I saw, but apparently has.
Absconded.
Had to leave.
You know, I think I have a simple resolution to this. We needed a simple deviation. It was for the basketball courts. It was a 15 feet was permitted and 19.33 feet were proposed because we want that basketball court as amenity. We will withdraw that part of the application. It will make it completely variance and deviation free, and we won't even need planning testimony.
So you want to amend the application and remove the basketball court floor?
What would you do there?
The height of the, of the basketball floor will be reduced, and it won't be, it'll be volleyball, I don't know. But it won't be a basketball court.
You could shrink the height of the building, too. That's not being offered yet, counsel. I didn't get that.
So it can be eliminated. I, I'm here to provide testimony on the deviation, if that works, because I can do it, and I know what the testimony is. It's classic C2 variance criteria. But if, if that's an objection because I didn't write the principal points, and that forces us to suspend our application, then the alternative would be a modify our plan not to require the variance.
So I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Marchetto. I don't advise that you provide such comments. Counsel, it's your application. If you want to amend it and remove the basketball court as opposed to having Mr. Marchetto attempt to put forth the planning testimony, Mr. Pallino is going to cross-examine him on his planning testimony. I understand he didn't write the principal points. I understand your expectation was Mr. McDonough was going to provide that testimony. Mr. Marchetto says he can pinch-hit, as they say in baseball, and is prepared to put forth the proofs of what he's already described as a deviation C2 variance. That places me in a prejudiced position because I don't have any report from Mr. Marchetto in front of me. I'm pretty sure Mr. Marchetto did not author a report, Mr. Pallino. I'm pretty sure Mr. Marchetto did not author a report, Mr. Polino.
I, I, that's the point. That's why I don't have it in front of me. So...
I'll note your objection. Do you want to amend the application to remove the basketball court?
If we could take a, if we could take a two-minute recess, so I could discuss with my client, it would take not more than 30 seconds.
Counsel, the... So amended?
Yes, I've had a chance to speak to my client. He has agreed to amend the application to reduce the maximum floor to ceiling height for the one floor from the 19.33 feet to 15 feet, which will make it conforming. This is now a fully as-of-right application, no deviation or variances are required.
Mr. Ward. Is it your understanding that the removal of the height within that floor of the project for the basketball court will bring it into conformity with respect to floor-to-ceiling height without altering the overall height of the building?
That's correct.
Does anybody have any question about that?
Anyone? I don't, it's pretty clear.
Polino, do you have any objection to that?
Okay. Thank you.
I have no further witnesses.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm gonna open it up to the public now. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this application?
Chair, see no one from the public. I wish to close the public portion.
Okay, the public is now closed.
I second it.
Perfect, thank you. And Matt?
Yes, so, application before us, 20 South Cove Avenue. The staff prepared a memo dated October 17th, 2024 regarding this application with several staff recommended conditions. They do have affordable housing in this project as a requirement. They also have some improvements which are permitted over the property line to, as encroachments. It's actually permitted right in the redevelopment plan. That said, they still would require a franchise ordinance for those, or such encroachments. So that is another more specific condition to this application. And then there's some more boilerplate conditions should the, the motion be made to approve this application. Regarding the, the testimony or the changing of the application or removal of the variances or the testation, or them attesting to the fact that they will be making a contribution regarding the, the lack of street trees. Those do remove any variances that would have been initially considered under this application as it was noticed. They have put on testimony regarding the facades, the design, the loading, the, the uses and density. There has been reference to the off-site parking spaces. There have been several applications in this redevelopment plan that have also recently got approval for off-site parking. And the access to which was never put on the record on how they get in the building or access that parking. But it was put on the record that these were set aside when we, when the board came to consider approving or denying that, those applications. This application is conforming in height and density, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Matt. Before we go forward with the motion, we'll have the two sides present closing statements. Mr. Polino, if you wish, you'd go first.
And Chairman, just before Mr. Polino gives those comments, Mr. Asidorian, can we have Mr. Marchetto articulate what the height of that floor is going to be by making the stipulated to change for purposes of the record? And, Mr. Marchetto, I just wanna know what it was and what it will be.
The new height of the ceiling will be 10 foot 4 inches.
Thank you.
Should we ask what the space of the, on the floor above will be? Will that become amenity space?
Yes, it is. Yes. The gymnasium pops up into the amenity space, so we lost that floor on the amenity space. By pushing the ceiling back down to its normal height, the amenity space will remain what it is, and it'll just...
I mean, on the floor above, where the ceiling's coming down, adjacent to the units on that floor? Will there be?
The units are, it's two stories of units, and then the amenity space is right behind, so it's a two-story space.
A two-story amenity space?
Amenity space, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Polino?
Yeah, I'll be short, because you've heard from me a lot.
I'm gonna start with just one geometric fact that I have trouble with. And maybe after this is over, Mr. Marchetto will take me aside and explain to me with, how the arithmetic works, but I don't see it. He's telling you that a, that a 16-story hotel is in the same box as a 30-story residential building. I begin with that. You just, you, you're, it's for you to consider the site plan that's been filed and determine whether or not it's compliant with the, with the redevelopment plan passed seven months ago. So, I leave that to you. The master deed, the, the master deed, you've heard a lot about it. I think it is fundamental to this matter, and if it tells you that the only thing that can be built on this location is a hotel, then I appreciate that the MLWL has, has a say in what this board hears, but this board has to hear with what is lawfully permitted on the site. Otherwise, we're just talking about fanciful things, right? We're just talking about maybe this could be built, or that could be built, but under a document that is a recorded document, it tells you it's gotta be a hotel, and this is not a hotel. The other things that trouble me is, you also heard that, that he's relying upon 200 parking spaces existing, hasn't planned for any, for it anywhere else, and that's in direct dispute. I'm objecting to it, because I'm telling you there aren't 200 existing spaces that he can rely upon. And he's telling you it is. Until that's resolved, you're again dealing with a fanciful issue here. You're dealing with, is there parking? Is there no parking? And you're gonna consider and allow this applicant to have site plan approval on the possibility that he's gonna get 200 existing spaces. Mr. Ward, I'd like you to remember that next time I make an application, because I think that that is, that's a, that's a fundamental problem in this application. It's not, he doesn't have the parking that he says he, he has, and it's required under even the amended plan. So, I'll leave you with that. You've heard all my other stuff about the master deeds and the unit deeds and the inability to file an applic, even file an application without consent. You've determined that, that it can go forward, but that's an issue that I assume another body is gonna look at. So, I'll, I'll leave you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polino.
Thank you. I believe this is a good application. It is fully conforming. We are not seeking any variances. We're not seeking any deviations. We're providing 300 units, 45 of which will be affordable. And like I said, we will be the first property, first residential property in the Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan to provide affordable units. His client owns two towers, 45 stories each. You know how many affordable units they have? Zero. That's where the focus should be on. And the question is, why are you so against affordable units? But with that said, I respectfully submit that the board approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asidorian.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, any motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0118, removing the variances, the variance of maximum of ceiling height of 19.33 to 10.4 ceiling height, which is now as, a as-of-right application.
I second it.
On a motion made and seconded to approve with conditions and removal of the variances as stated on the record, Acting Commissioner, Acting Vice Chair, Gangdon.
I'm happy to see that there is 45 units that are restricted as affordable housing. This is an as-of-right application, and I vote aye.
Councilwoman Prinzeri.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you very much, over to the next.
Thank you, too. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break, guys, so we'll be back at 8:30.
And I would caution those members further down on the agenda.
With and front yard setbacks are really a product of existing conditions, so we're trying to work with the existing sidewalk widths and make sure that they are at least maintained, and where we can improve them with the proposed street trees, we are doing so in keeping with the forestry standards. The streetscape is important on this project, so while we are deficient in the sidewalk widths along 14th and certain other sections along Erie and 15, we are maintaining the historic character of the Salvation Army building, as well as proposing a very appropriately tastefully designed addition to the other portions of the block along the streetscape. So, that's one aspect to add. With respect to the maximum tower of the building coverage, one thing to note that I think the project engineer just mentioned is that we are proposing a almost 9,500-square-foot green roof. So while we are def, or exceed the maximum permitted coverage for the tower, where 85.5 feet permitted, or proposed, and only 70% of the upper portions are permitted for the tower, we are utilizing the remaining space on the base of the building for appropriate means, as well as, as appropriate setbacks. So, with respect to the building height and feet, obviously, we detailed the elevations and the minimum floor-to-ceilings for those in, for, for the, for the overall tower of the building. But I do wanna reference that this proposed story at 16 stories, 174 feet, is consistent with other tower developments in the neighborhood in this district. So just to name a few in terms of consistency, Soho Loss is existing at 20 stories, Cast Iron Loss existing at 26 stories, Hudson House existing at 28 stories, Hudson Gardens, which is a new project with the city, being proposed at 26 stories, and 16, 619 Maron Boulevard, at the time of this, we understood it to be 14 stories, but I do understand they're amending it. I don't know exactly how many additional stories, but again, those are all in concert with the proposed 16 stories being provided with this application. And with respect to the rear yard setback, I do think, just to reiterate, that it is a complicated site in terms of three frontages, so it's technically defined as a cap lot. It's a combination of a through and a corner lot, or in this case, a double corner lot. So we are still providing what would we call that interior light well. There's a pinch point of 10 in one instance, but it goes down to at, at, at the base where it meets at 0 foot, but the predominant setback in the courtyard area is 24 feet. So there, that, that I think was shown visually in the plan, but I just wanted to reference that dimension. Spoke about the loading, I won't get into that. Deviation, I think that was clear, and the signage was relatively straightforward. We're still, even though we're proposing two signs, we're still less than the overall square footage permitted, so we're inconsistent with the square overall size of the signage. With that, in terms of promoting the municipal land use law, it's an appropriate guidance of development for a mixed-use development that's also introducing affordable housing, that's purpose E. We're also establishing an appropriate population density and concentrations that promote, will contribute to the well-being of persons in the neighborhood and neighborhoods, so that's purpose E. We are not requesting any sort of increase in density. We're utilizing a bonus that's contemplated in the plan, so it would be an appropriate location of, of the added density. And we are promoting the desirable visual environment through the creative design techniques of good civic design and arrangement. Whenever you have an opportunity to do an adaptive historic preservation element with infill development, I think it creates a really unique setting. So this image I have up from the architecture set is, is telling of that, that goal of this project, so that's purpose I. On the negative criteria side, we did work with city planning, historic preservation, the historic preservation office, as well as the transportation office on this project. We had multiple iterations over many months, if not years, really trying to refine what the overall proposed plan is. So we do think what's before you today adds a really dynamic, modern residential development in the appropriate portion of the site, as well as the hotel aspect of the site, which is a relatively new addition. Both are permitted uses. It's a mixed-use overall development, so I don't see any detriment, given that it's, it's location is in the approach of, of 14th Street, as well as the overall neighborhood in, in the, the north portion of the city. We are furthering purpose of the redevelopment plan and land use plan, so this is a second prom. I, I don't see any impairment here. We're permitted use, we're implementing the bonus, so I do think we are encouraging conservation and preservation of selected structures, including those with historical or architectural significance, by providing opportunities for adaptive reuse, which will give an economic life comparable to new structures. That's the historic preservation element of it, and we are also creating, creation of new, major new employment and housing opportunities for residents of Jersey City. We're doing both. We have the commercial aspect, as well as the residential aspect of this project. Board's heard me speak on the master plan before. We're ensuring available housing is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future residents, as well as the recognize and promote the richness of the city's historic assets. And lastly, I would just say that we are, we are promoting a diversified economy with, with this large-scale mixed-use development. So, I don't see any impairment of the master plan. I do think we're furthering goals of it, and I do think this application meets those justification standards. So, that completes my testimony. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Room's right? Nope.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I would just conclude by saying that I am in receipt of the September 19th, 2024 memorandum prepared by Matt Ward. We've reviewed the conditions therein and can accept them. I know if the chairman was here, he would ask me to add the condition regarding materials for the affordable units, and of course, we will also agree to, to add that to the resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up for public. Anyone here from the public? Anyone?
Chair, see no one from the public. I would like to close the public. Chair, see no one from the public. I would like to close the public portion.
I second it.
Okay, public is now closed. Matt?
Yeah, so they, just to put on the record that they're going to comply with the recommendations in the staff memo. Should you make a motion to approve this application? In addition to that, there was a memo produced by the JCMUA and the Department of Infrastructure, to which we would that one of the conditions is that they comply with those those comments as well. This being preliminary, though, this, we're probably very far from, from that being the case, but it will stand. And this application did, I will echo it, they went through a lot of iterations. They worked very diligently with staff and historic preservation staff with regards to them being denied or required to retain a portion of the building with its, since it was determined that it was significant. This application is doing what the amendment that allowed this to move forward wanted. It is utilizing the affordable housing bonus. It is providing those units, 40 of which will be deed-restricted affordable housing. And it is doing it in a very innovative mixed-use fashion with the hotel component. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Matt.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0019 as presented to the board together with staff recommendation and conditions.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Go call.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Council, Councilwoman Prinsari.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah, I definitely know this place, you know, coming out of hall and tunnel. And you can see on the right side, there used to be used stuff selling over there. And such a big apartment coming, it's going to turn into New York. That's what I feel. So I'm going to vote aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, good, nice job. I like the building. Actually, it looks really nice. I love that you retained a portion of the other building, the affordable housing, the hotel thing there. It's a win-win, really win. And I think there's, it meets the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan. I vote aye. Good luck.
Motion carried all in favor.
Thank you. All right, guys, that concludes our... Anybody want to say anything? We are done. Thank you. No, just kidding. We have, Mr. Harrington was gonna be up next. Right, Chuck?
Right.
You gonna say something to us?
So, yeah, I guess I'll ask that this be carried, right? So is, I don't know, is any room on, on a November meeting anymore or?
I, I think it's probably best that we start pushing.
What?
Yeah, December 10.
December 10th? Okay. So this is, yeah, P2024-0006, 38 Cottage?
Correct.
Okay.
So to November, to December 10th?
10th.
Okay.
And then I have, while I'm up here, if I could, I also have P2024-0119, 285 Newark Avenue, if I could move that to December 10th as well.
Okay.
With preservation of notices.
Preservation notice. Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair.
Mr. Wayne, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So with me this evening, I have two witnesses.
I knew you were gonna do that.
I'd be remiss if I didn't try. So, so with respect, I, I know that you just carried to December 10th. I would only ask, I know this is a relatively small application. We've been carried now a, a second time. I will be here on November 12th anyways for another application. If there's any room on the agenda for a small application, I would respectfully request that we be adjourned to November 12th with preservation of notice.
Okay. We're good, I mean, he's gonna be here anyway, right?
He's gonna be here anyway.
Okay. All right, Mr. Wayne.
So just confirm with preservation of notice?
Preservation of notice.
All right, thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Sorry about that.
Absolutely.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to resolutions.
Chair, there are 13 resolutions.
Okay.
I know, I'll read.
There are real resolutions.
Sure.
Really? Okay. Look at you.
Resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board applicant 35 Cottage LLC for final site plan amendment approval, 35-43 Cottage Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 7903, Lot 17.01, case number P2024-0160. Resolution two is resolution of City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P2024-0007. This is for the Mandalay on the Hudson condominium, 22nd Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 11603, Lot 25. Third resolution is a resolution of Planning Board of City of Jersey City, Liberty Harbor Holding LLC for interim use, mobile concrete batching plant, Morris Canal, Block 15801, Lot 28, case number P2024-0091. Fourth resolution is a resolution of Planning Board of City of Jersey City for the Bayfront Partners 32 LP, extension of preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations, 100 Kellogg Street, Block 21901.01, Lot 6.01. Case number P2024-0157. Fifth resolution is the resolution of Planning Board of City of Jersey City for Sadia Youssef Ali, minor subdivision approval, 13-15 Jewett Avenue, Block 16802, Lot 33, case number P22-234. Next resolution is the resolution of Planning Board of City of Jersey City, case P2023-0110, minor subdivision with C variants. Address is 296 Seaview Avenue. It's Block 28501, Lot 1. Seventh resolution is a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City for the Hudson Exchange Embankment Plaza LLC, 190-day subdivision filing extension. And that is for Block 11603, Lots 2, 47.02, and 51.02. It's case number P2024-0166. Next resolution is the resolution of Planning Board of City of Jersey City approving minor site plan with deviations and conditions. The applicant's DCI signs and awnings, it's for minor site plan approval, 909 Bergen Avenue, Block 12106, Lot 6, case P2024-0020. Next resolution is a resolution of the Planning Board approving a one-year site plan extension for applicant LK Culver LLC. It's case number P2024-0148 212-238 Culver Avenue. Next resolution is a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, Homestead Market LLC, minor subdivision approval for 25 Van Ripen, 29 Van Ripen, 608 Pavonia, and 612 Pavonia, Block 7904, Lots 1, 2, 14, and 16. Case number P2024-0128. Next resolution is a resolution of the Planning Board for the Homestead Market LLC preliminary and final major site plan for 17 Van Ripen, 25 Van Ripen, 29 Van Ripen. It's case number P2024-0129. Next resolution is a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, 100 Water Street Phase 2 LLC, amended preliminary and final major site plan approval for Phase 2A, amendment, major preliminary site plan approval for Phase 2B, an interim use parking approval, Block 20704, Lots 1 and 2, Block 20703, Lot 3.01, 151 Yale Avenue, formerly known as 135 Yale Avenue, 165 Yale Avenue, and 100 Water Street. It's case number P2024-0051. And the final resolution is a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, Homestead Market LLC for preliminary and final site plan approval, 608 Pavonia and 612 Pavonia, Block 7904, Lot 14.01, case number P2024-0130.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded.
Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari. Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye. Do we have executive session? Need, need anyone? No, no, okay.
I think we promote Santo to me, too.
Can I have an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, Santo, you found a new job.